Sorry, I should have checked with my cameraman. Are we all good? Thank you.
Ms. Derico?
Here.
Ms. Patel?
Here.
Mr. Shi?
Here.
Mrs. Peng?
Here.
Dr. Chen?
Here.
Mrs. Conway?
Here.
Mrs. Budofsky?
Here.
Mrs. Madiker?
Here.
Or President, Mrs. Maroni.
Good evening. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice and to participate in the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with this provision of this act, the Edison Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, place, and thereof posted in the Board of Education Administrator Offices. Copy of these notices was sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger on January 7th, 2020. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and applicable state regulations. Thank you. We will start off with the approval of minutes. If you have any discussion or questions on the minutes, please see Mr. Mashad.
Correct, Dan?
Yes.
All right. And we're going to go right into the administrative report, superintendent's report.
At this point, I have deferred to the board secretary for the audit's report.
Okay. Now, the audit was due in Trenton by December 23rd, which was sent to Trenton on time. We have our auditor from Hodglick and Morrison. Andrew Hodglick here to make a presentation, a quick presentation to the board. Mr. Hodglick?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. Pleasure to be here. As Dan mentioned, the report was filed at the end of December this year. Timing was off a little bit due to the fact that the state again had delayed information that's required to be included in the report. Usually, the report is due in the beginning of December, so the timing was a little bit late. That's why we're here in January as opposed to December. With respect to the report itself, this, again, this is on the financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2019. It was a clean opinion on the financial statements, which means in all material respects, the financial statements are a fair representation of the district's financial position. If you get into the careful a little bit, there are three different types of presentations in terms of balances and whatnot. Generally, the focus is on the budgetary basis for the board. And in terms of how the results of the operations for the year ended 6/30/19, fund balance did improve from year to year, went actually from $17 million to a $28 million fund balance based on the activity 19. The plan was for a 4.3 utilization, $4.3 million utilization of fund balance, but you did earn back $15.4 million positive variance, most of that on unexpended funds in the appropriation side of the equation. So, as that all works out, then you basically increased your reserves, your capital reserves, maintenance and emergency reserves from, what was it, $800,000 at 6/30/19 up to $7.7 million at the end of 6/30/19. And your unassigned or free balance increased from $5.1 million up to $5.8, and that's the maximum the state allows you to maintain as a free unassigned balance. In terms of findings, we had two findings that Dan will have a corrective action plan on. We need to see improvements on the payroll account reconciliations. They were not done on a timely basis. And also, grant expenditure reporting. The state had come in and did a review on some of your grants, and the reports that were filed didn't necessarily represent what the findings that were included in the state's report. So, there is a discrepancy between the reports that went down versus what the state had found. But it was about $50,000 total difference, so we're not talking about extreme dollar amounts. So, that's the basis in terms of the findings that need to be reviewed in your corrective action plan. And with that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to...
Question from anyone? Any of the board members? Mr. Shi?
Yeah, I just have something about the recommendation, the corrective actions. So, the recommendation is payroll and payroll agency bank reconciliation should be performed and reviewed in a timely basis. So, what kind of timely you're talking about, is that a monthly or bi-monthly?
Sure, we would like to see them be done, obviously, you know, within the 30-day, to the close of the month, they should be prepared after a 30-day period.
Okay. Just want to be clear. And also, on the corrective actions towards the end, there is something, the BA has reviewed all the federal grants' final reports to ensure that the accuracy reflects expenditures on the final. However, the district had a consolidated grant audit, which includes several disallowed expenditures. So, my question is, when we did the operational audit, we found some of the expenditures were not allowed to be reimbursed. And is this similar to that?
This was not the operational audit. Actually, this was a...
I know that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so, we had that issue, that certain things were not supposed to be reimbursed and got reimbursed. And we put a plan in place, a process in place, to prevent things from happening. And is this the same thing that's happening again, or this is different?
This is different. This is, yeah, this is basically, the state came in and some of your expenditures, they didn't believe they actually fit the proper category that's allowed by the grant, so they just disallowed some of those expenses.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Next up on the agenda for the board meeting is the bond referendum. As you may know, that at our January 6th meeting, the board voted to approve a referendum to be voted on on March 10th of 2020. We took a look at the previous referendum that was presented in December. We made some tweaks on it at our finance and facilities committee meeting. And tonight, we're going to present that information and go over the process. So, at this point, I would ask Marcus Rousseau and Jean Perrettoni from SSP to briefly go over some of the highlights, if you don't mind.
Good evening. Jean Perrettoni, SSP Architects. What Dr. Bragan did not mention was the quick study he did of both the long-range facilities master plan and all the district capacity analysis that we did during the months leading up to the first referendum in December. But when he came on board, he basically took a look at all those existing numbers. He looked at the overcrowded conditions. He visited the schools. And so, he was well informed when we had our facilities and finance meeting to make recommendations as to what we could tweak. And what you're going to see this evening is that we concentrated on the nonessential components of the referendum to remove that. This occurs at the two high schools. This is just your existing site plan of J.P. Stevens High School. This is the current rendering of it. And what we have outlined in the red boxes are the areas of particular interest to us in terms of work that we didn't have to do right away. And that is relocating the tennis courts, as well as doing a turf field replacement. This is work that can be done in the future by the district, but it does not impact the allocation for the additional capacity for the classrooms, but that's the new construction that's being shown in the purple in this diagram. The yellow are the interior renovation work. Those components will remain at J.P. Stevens. That's what's adding your extra capacity for the students, the student seats, as well as the program support for all the various educational programs, both for sciences and for other components, including the media center. The next diagram shows how it will be in terms of where the existing tennis courts would remain in place. The existing fields have that potential for development, but will remain in place. And then, the next diagram just shows the red lines taken away, because this is really essentially the information that we convey to the Department of Education as the change of that. This work still costs a couple million dollars, so I'll get to a slide that shows you the cost impact on that, but this is something that we removed. Moving on to the floor plans, you can see that the floor plans essentially are remaining the same in terms of the blue being the new construction for classrooms. Some of the striped areas are the areas of interior renovations, as well as the special program areas that are being added on to the addition. And this is, we should mention that this is primarily a two-story addition, and we have one three-story component of a classroom component with that. At Edison High School, we took the same approach of looking for what was nonessential and noneducational as the impact. And in particular, we looked at its existing location of its tennis courts, as well as the removal of the turf field from this referendum plan. And those are the areas you can see in the red boxes. And this is currently what we're proposing, is that the tennis courts remain in place. The field turf is being done separately by the district. The tennis courts can be relocated in the future. There's not to say that the board may not elect to do that separately, but it's not needed for this referendum. So, we took those components out so that the final diagram without the red boxes shows like this. We're still doing the modifications in the front of the school, and that's that purple addition in the front. That's a two-story addition. We're still doing the modifications in the rear of the school. That includes the new main gym, as well as new science classrooms up above. And then, those areas in that gold color, gold-yellow color are all the interior renovation components that'll be modified or changed or expanded in place within the school. And these are just the diagrams that show a little greater detail of just what's happening in the school in terms of blue being classrooms and the gold color solids, new construction, and the striped are special activity areas, including the expanding cafeteria areas on the ground floor. And on the upper floor, you can see it's a two-story additions in both the front and in the back. And here's where we basically come up with the changes to the referendum. And you're going to be hearing from both the bond counsel, as well as your financial consultant, on the impact of these reductions. You can see the first line was the existing site costs that were associated with the December referendum. Then, you see reductions for the next two lines, and that's for the two high schools. J.P. Stevens High School, which is a little bit over $2.4 million reduction. And you can see for Edison High School, it's about 3.0, close to $3.9 million in taking that site work out. When you add up these columns, you can see the two boxes that have changed are the ones down below that would have the big red boxes around them. So, the total for Edison High School, and that includes the new construction, the renovations, the summary of the hard costs, the soft costs, which includes the fees miscellaneous and contingency, is a little bit over $74 million and approximately $53, $53.25 for Edison High School. The net total reduction is a little bit over $6 million, is $6.307,000. And that's what is coming off from that total bond referendum. So, the new total bond referendum is the 183, 193 number shown in the red highlight. And we've broken that up into the local share and the state aid. And I do want to make a point that the state aid does not change from, that was what was estimated in the previous referendum, because all the educational spaces are remaining the referendum. So, you're getting the financing on those educations being maintained by the state. So, the new local share has been reduced by the $6 million, $6.3 million, where the state aid is expected to be maintained at $31 million. All the other four projects are remaining the same. There's been no other changes that we deemed as nonessential or educational. They were really basic and straightforward. And I think that's what Dr. Bragan was trying to go after, was trying to get it down to the bone of what can add the capacity with what the board can do in the future.
Questions?
Any questions?
Oh, question, good. Go ahead.
So, I just had a question on, so why were you relocating the tennis courts? I'm sorry, I came late, so...
I'm sorry. Why were you initially relocating the tennis courts? Well, there are some benefits to relocating the tennis courts. In both cases, you add parking.
Okay.
So, they're both two high school sites that are always in need of parking, and you improve the circulation for Edison High School, as shown on this by actually having, if you can go back, Marcus, to the earlier version. You can see by adding, removing the tennis courts, we add parking on the top, and we actually allow for circulation that can go through two points, two streets. So, it goes from street to street. So, you actually have, you know, an improvement in terms of the circulation path that would happen on the site. And the same thing, if you back up to J.P. Stevens, a similar scenario, in that the circulation, as you can see, we're adding capacity with parking for it, as well as making sure that we have circulation all around the site. And in the current plan as proposed, we can still have the circulation around the site, but we lose some of the parking. And that's why we're saying that the board may choose in the future to relocate that, to get that additional parking on the site.
Okay. And what is included in the soft costs?
The soft costs includes, Marcus, if you want to take this one?
Basically, soft costs are construction management fees, architectural engineering fees, it's testing fees, so, you know, materials testing during construction to make sure you're getting solid materials, it's bonding costs, it's legal costs, and basically, any cost associated with advancing the work. You know, all the hard costs are included in the construction costs.
Okay. And my final question is, in the contingency, you had $5.9 million for J.P. and $4.3 for Edison High. So, if you don't have any contingency, is that the money that you will not use?
No, the contingency is still in the project.
Okay.
It's something that we highly recommend you maintain a level of contingency in a project. One, because, you know, there's going to be a level of design that advances and things are going to come up as the project advances. But more importantly, as construction starts, you're going to need some money set aside in case you dig and you find something that needs to be remediated, or you find something that just wasn't what you expected, so you have to deal with that in construction. In fact, the state requires you to hold a certain percentage of money aside for contingency for that reason. So, that's been untouched within this.
Right. But if I understand your question, you're saying that if the project comes in, if the bids come in, then change orders and things that happen are less than this. Yes, this is, these are budget numbers. They're not a requirement that you spend up to this amount. This is a cap. And that fluid number, that contingency is part of that fluid number that allows you to have enough for, by the state require contingency and what good practice contingency is, but at the same time, you do not have to spend that if bids come in and things are favorable. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you, guys. At this point, if, we'd like to call up Lisa Gorad from Lance Goldman &amp; Spitzer. She's our bond counsel. Just to talk a little bit about the process, Lisa, on what that entails for a project such as this.
Uh, thank you. Sure, thank you. So, and as we've said before, in order to authorize the Board of Education to spend this money, appropriate the money, and bond the money, which means borrow the money for the project, they need to present a referendum to the public, and that referendum needs to pass in order for the board to move forward with this project. So, the resolution that the board will be considering at their January 27th meeting is the resolution that puts this project on the ballot for March 10th. March 10th is the next available election date. The next available election date after March 10th is September, end of September. So, there's a big gap between March and September, as when a board can seek approval from their voters. The question that you will see on the ballot will look a lot like the question that was on the ballot in December, except the amount is less, in that it is reduced by $6.3 million. The noneducational site work was pulled out. As you saw previously, it'll recite that the state has a state share that they're going to pay of over $31 million towards the project costs, and that the board will borrow this money over 25, 30 years through long-term bonds. It'll also recite, as is the case, that that $31 million or in the state funding is not available unless the referendum passes, just to make that clear once again. So, this project will be presented March 10th. Once the board acts, we will send this to the election officials, this resolution, and they will put the ballot out, they'll advertise it, and that will be the ballot question that is on, in March. If the referendum should pass, bonds will be issued. I do not anticipate that they would all be issued at once. It's a large amount of money. I think it would, most likely, your financial advisor would make that determination, but maybe possibly two or three tranches. And that would help as the projects come in under budget, so you're only bonding, you're only borrowing for what you really need, so you don't overborrow. So, if you borrowed the entire 183 at once and the projects came in under, you'd have extra money, and you don't want to borrow more than you really need to borrow. So, that's what the referendum will authorize. The financial advisor has prepared a tax impact. And again, the state aid did not change, because the projects that were pulled out were not educational projects, and therefore, were not getting state funding.
Want any questions?
I have a question, Lisa. There's a perception out there, Lisa, that this referendum is just being put forth again with the intention of a second failure that would mean an automatic approval by the state if we submitted it there. Two things. One is, I want to say publicly, that's not our perception here on the board. Whereas the superintendent, as Jean said, we reviewed the proposal. We made cuts on things that we thought were superfluous, that we could still address the overcrowding and kind of live without for the time being. And we are intending for this to pass, and going to work very hard for that. So, thank you for saying that, which I neglected to. But the perception is, we're just going to do this again and get it passed, and then send it to the state, and they're going to just give their stamp of approval. You and I know that's not the case, but could you share that with the public for us?
Sure. Well, first of all, as I mentioned, between March and September is a huge gap. When you have a huge gap in terms of when you can have a referendum, that means a huge gap in terms of bidding and getting this project done. When you have a huge delay in bidding projects, architects and estimators need to increase the price. So, one of the goals about getting it out sooner was, if it passed, to get the projects out to bid as soon as possible, to get prices that would come in at budget. So, that's a practical reason. Now, if the referendum does fail, I know some people think, oh, if it fails again, we just send a letter to the commissioner, and the commissioner orders the issuance of the bonds. That is very far from what occurs. In the, let's see, that appeal has existed for about over 20 years. In that 20 years, I know of two districts that have been successful in their appeals. So, that should give you a sense of how successful those appeals are. If a referendum fails, the district has to petition the Department of Education, and it has to show the shortcomings in space, it has to prove it. It's almost like a litigation, and it has to show that the student population is affected education-wise, test score-wise, by the current status of the facilities. Once the board files that document, it's large, with the DOE, they determine whether or not that document satisfies the requirements of the statute. Once they determine it has satisfied the statute, they send it then to the Department of Controversies and Disputes. Controversies and disputes reviews it, and if they deem it satisfactory, they tell the district, okay, district, now we want you to advertise for public comment on this issue. And then, they refer it to an administrative law judge. The administrative law judge takes up the case, and after these publications are made, there is a large, significant public comment process whereby they will receive both oral and written comments from the public. Once that hearing is conducted, then the district actually presents its case to the administrative law judge. The administrative law judge takes some time to consider it and makes a recommendation. So, the ALJ may recommend to go forward with the bonds. It may recommend that no bond should be issued. And the ALJ sends that recommendation to the Commissioner of Education. The Commissioner can accept, modify, or reject. Then, there's another comment period. The division then will issue a report. The report goes to the SDA, the Schools Development Authority, for a determination of the final eligible cost. Now, you may ask, well, how long does this take? Couple months? In the two districts that were successful, it was over a year just to get to that process. Once the FEC is determined, then there is a determination of aid. I cannot tell you that the district would get any aid, even if you were successful after this year, and the commissioner made a determination that the bonds should be issued for this project, there is no guarantee that there will be any aid at all for the project. Typically, and the statute requires that the SDA build the project. In the last district that was successful, they let the district build the project. But just so you know, the statute does require that the SDA build the project, so if they enforce that provision, local loses control over the construction of the project, and it goes to the state to be built. That's a very, it's a long explanation, but I understand there is a perception that you just appealed to the commissioner, but it is a very long, arduous process, and you have to prove your case, health and safety issues, score issues. It's not a slam dunk by any stretch.
Thank you, Ms. Gorad. Question? Mrs. Conway?
Just one question. You said through the process, at one point, we could be denied state aid. Is that the $31 million that they talked about before?
Yes.
So, by this process, we would lose $31 million?
I don't know that you would, but you could.
Yeah.
You could, yes. They will take a look at the district to see what the district can afford and what they can't afford. As your financial advisor will show you, the impact on the average assessed home, I think it's just a little over $200 a year for $183 million. In the world of bond referenda that I live in, that is not a high district. That is not a high amount. I know for taxpayers, it is a burden, but I'm just saying, as the state would survey the recent referendum we passed, one was $560 for $30 million. So, there are smaller districts that are doing large referendum that are having significant tax impact. So, I'm not sure that the Commissioner of Education would determine this tax impact as being onerous. Now, if they don't give you aid, it would be more than $215, but, I mean, it wouldn't jump to $600. It would go proportionately, but I'm just, I don't know if they'd provide aid or not. We can't guarantee that in the appeal.
And that little amount, you said a little over $200?
Right.
A year? That would be when we completely borrowed the 183 million?
That's exactly right.
Initially, when we're not, say, we borrow 50 million?
Right.
It would be a lot less.
We would anticipate it would slowly ramp up to that number.
And then back down.
I don't want to steal your glory, but, yeah, it would start, I'm going to, you know, maybe, you know, 80, then it, you know, it would ramp up. Yes, it wouldn't be $215. Right. Right, that assumes all the borrowing at once, because we have to have some assumptions.
And just one more question. A couple of people have mentioned it, and it kind of bothers me that you keep saying it, that the tennis courts and the baseball courts and the other courts are nonessential. My three children were athletes, and it was very essential to them. It's a part of a well-rounded education. Education doesn't end in a classroom. So, even though we pulled it out of this referendum, I presume, I will not say assume, I presume that we will do it in the future with finding money elsewhere. But please, I just can't handle that, that it's not, those things are nonessential.
They were noneducational, and the only reason why they were pulled out was because the state wasn't paying any portion for them. So, the district was going to pay for 100% of them, whether they were in the referendum or out of the referendum. So, since there was no state contribution, that's why.
Ms. Patel?
In the districts that appealed, do you know how much they spent on legal expenses? Like a ballpark idea?
I would ballpark somewhere between $100 and $200,000. Ballpark, I don't know for sure. I didn't do any of those appeals, but just knowing how much. It's a litigation. It is not just a petition. You have to make the case in front of the ALJ.
And is that you?
Well, I think we would work with your attorney as well jointly, yes.
Ms. Madiker?
So, if you remember the districts that appealed, how much did they appeal for and how much was approved?
Okay, that's a good question. And I don't have those exact numbers. So, Clark was a successful appeal. They had three failed referenda. They appealed for new construction and renovation. The commissioner only gave them the renovation. The other, more recent, was Freehold Borough. Now, that's a small district. I think it was, I'm going to guess, so please don't get me wrong, I think it was between $20 and $30 million. I think it was, I'm going to guess, so please don't get me wrong, I think it was between 20 and 30 million dollars. And that was a district that had had two failed referenda, but a lower socioeconomic community that was having difficulty with test scores. And so, they were overcrowded. So, the commissioner deemed that these new educational facilities would help the children get the education they need to increase their test scores.
I have one more question, but I don't know if that's a question for you or for somebody else. In the proposal, it says final eligible costs. What are eligible costs? 30, 40% of the final eligible cost. So, what's eligible cost?
That's a question for me, yes.
Okay.
So, the process to get to the referendum, one of the first steps is to make application to the Department of Education and your architects did that with cost estimates and describing the projects. And the Department of Education deems what is eligible and ineligible. And the department, correct me if I'm wrong, Gina Marcus, determined that with this referendum that's being presented, all of the renovations are eligible. They also determined that all of the space you're building is completely justified by overcrowding and unhoused students. So, it's all eligible. So, why isn't it 183 dollars in eligible cost? The reason is that the state takes the position that new construction is only eligible for 143 dollars a square foot. Now, it costs you a lot more than 143 dollars a square foot to build, but they only give you 40% of 143 dollars a square foot. Renovation is funded at the cost, 40% of the cost, but the state reduces the eligible cost for new construction and that's why. But all the elements of this project are at the highest eligibility. The state has deemed them necessary for the health and safety of the students.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Carr.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, we'd ask for Daria Melchioni from Arquesia Financial Advisors to just discuss the tax impact for the average homeowner.
Okay. So, some of these numbers were obviously already discussed, but the total amount, 183 million, 193,000, is going to be, assuming we do this in one bond issue. And as we spoke about, that is something that will determine, you know, that financial strategy that makes the most sense, whether it's a combination of multiple bond issues. Just you would need to keep in mind the fact that every time you issue bonds, you do pay issuance costs. There is also, there's also interest rate risk that you take on every time you issue a bond and you leave an amount outstanding. So, you know, we just keep that in mind as we go through this process. But our numbers initially assumed that it is one bond issue, 183 million. We assumed that the issuance date would be in July of this year. It would be spread out over 30 years with level debt service over that 30 years. The assumed interest cost is a 3.5% net interest cost. So, we typically are conservative with these numbers as we don't know necessarily where the market's going to be. So, we put about 100 basis point cushion into those numbers. And obviously, it was talked about, the state aid, that didn't change. So, you know, we included that in our numbers. So, the average impact on the average assessed home of 179,600 dollars is 215 dollars. So, that's the average over the life of the bond issue. Again, you know, as it's determined going forward, it's possible to break these up. It's even possible to issue a portion in short-term notes if there's a period when you're not quite sure where those bids are going to come back. As Lisa mentioned, what you don't want to do is issue one large sum of money and borrow that long-term and then have, you know, the construction costs and the bids come in a lot lower than that. So, with this amount and this scope of project, it would probably be the most beneficial to stage this over a period of time. One thing just to mention as well, we're in a historical low interest rate environment, especially in the municipal world right now. So, you know, we did make some adjustments from the last numbers we ran for the last referendum, but we are still in an historically low interest rate environment. So, if there isn't an immediate need to borrow, this is a really good time to do it, for sure.
Questions for the board? Yes.
You said, I see dollar signs when you people talk about added expenses.
Yeah.
When we issue a bond, the costs, what's the approximate cost of that process?
Sure. So, with each bond issue, you typically have a set amount of fees. I shouldn't say set amount of fees, but you have, you know, a certain amount of professionals that you have to pay. The fees aren't necessarily set. But, you know, really, the only thing that is dependent on the actual amount of bonds that you issue is a rating. And that is something that you'd have to get with every single bond issue. The other expenses are our expense, you know, bond counsel, auditor expense, because we use the audit in the offering document. You know, those are typically, you know, the professionals' fees that are included in that.
They're included in the bond. They're not budgetary expenses. They're built into the.
They're built into this.
So, all of that's already built in?
Absolutely. Yes, it's built into, it's built into the issuance, yes.
But how many are built in? Like if we didn't borrow 183 million, we borrowed 80, 60, 20?
Yes, so each time, you'd have a separate set of fees.
And all those fees are included?
They would be included each time, yes. But you would have to pay, you know, every single bond issue, you'd have to pay a rating. Every single bond issue, you'd pay for Lisa's services, for our services. And typically, when we're going through this process, you know, we'll work with the district. If there's a, you know, if over a three- or five-year period, there's multiple bond issues, you know, we, there's certain ways to minimize those costs. But yeah, there's, it typically ranges, you know, cost of issuance anywhere from 50 to 75,000. But they're built into here. It's, yeah, it is expensive. So, one of the things that we will help evaluate when we go through this process is, you know, what that means each time. So, you probably want to limit, you know, you don't necessarily want to do a bond issue every single year for five years. I don't know that that would make a lot of sense, you know, financially for the district.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Sure.
Dr. Bragan?
Sure. You'll find next on the agenda, some resolutions. The first one there is for Middlesex County and New Jersey School Board Association representatives, of which we have Beth Maroni and Elizabeth Conway. There's also a resolution indicating School Board Recognition Month, as well as student recognitions, which will occur at the board meeting. There's a resolution under Curriculum Instruction for a Curriculum Guide for Introduction to Baking. Resolution for Field Trip Approvals, as well as a resolution for Professional Development Approvals for Staff for the upcoming months. And in Special Services, we have a resolution including all of our added district placements. And Mr. Board President, I believe that's all I have.
Questions on any of those?
I just had not a question. Is it Middlesex County School Boards Association or Education Services Commission?
There's two commissions there. One, they're both separate.
Oh, okay.
So, Beth Maroni, I think, is doing the Special Education Commission Services and Mrs. Conway is?
School Boards.
Yeah, I think there's a type word, say, School Board, Middlesex County School Boards Association.
Okay. We'll take a look at that. I thought it was the School Boards. You're talking about Ed Services Commission?
Well, Beth is Ed Services.
Got you.
It's New Jersey Education Services.
Correct.
Okay. So, I'll have to correct that.
We'll make that correction.
And also, I know Elizabeth said she would help out with that committee. Would we want to add Carol on that committee as co? Okay, so. Congratulations, Carol. Dan?
Yes.
Can you add Carol Budowski also with Elizabeth Conway for the School Boards?
School Boards?
Yep. Okay. See how easy that was?
Ms. Madiker, I do believe that this is right because there is a Middlesex County School Boards Association in a different, in addition to the New Jersey Ed Services Commission. So, I think that is correct as is, but we'll double check that.
Okay, yeah, no worries. I was just making sure.
Unless you want to be on that committee? Do you want to be on that committee?
No, I don't.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your point. I think you have other questions on that.
I just have a question on the intro to baking. Is that for 2021?
I would defer to Mrs. Polikowski, if you want to just share on that, because we had a long discussion about the intro to baking and why we're doing that.
We can come to the mic.
If you mind sharing that, Ms. Polikowski.
Get some camera time.
Good evening. It's a matter of certification. There is a shortage of family and consumer science teachers, as you know. And at the time, we are short one teacher because of retirements. We did find a teacher certified in baking, so we have written a curriculum for that. And the students will instead, you know, they're planning around the whole baking part of it rather than just cooking, so.
So, it's just a matter of?
Yes.
Setting it up in case?
Exactly.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
On field trip approval, there's 80 students and four advisors from J.P. Stevens FCC LA will be attending the North American Invitational Model UN Conference?
Obviously a type.
So, is it FCC LA going to FCC LA or Model UN going to Model UN?
I am aware, I think it's been combined, if I remember correctly. There's two different things. There should both be on there.
Okay, so we'll just fix that.
Okay.
Can you tell me how to get the baking certificate? Because I want to go for that.
I will make sure that we have samples.
Samples at the next meeting. Thank you, Ms. Polikowski. Oh, wait. Any more questions on those items? All right, Mr. Rashad?
Okay, if you turn to the finance part of your agenda, you'll see that the investment report for the month of December, we received interest in the amount of 40,687.50. Our total interest for the year so far is up to 311,287. Then we followed out with the financial report for November, the Board Secretary's report, followed by the Treasury School Monies Report. Following that is the, these are the resolutions that we're presenting for the board approval on the 27th. The first one is a transfer of funds in the amount of 588,650. You noticed 170,000 for charter schools. However, that charter school deficit right now will be offset by some refunds I get back from some of the charter schools that originally put in for enrollment. The enrollment didn't materialize, so that we paid them already through December. Now, they owe us the money back. But I have to cover the deficit until I get that money back. Then I'll be able to transfer that money somewhere else. Other than that, they're fairly minimal. We do have some capital, capital equipment that we're covering, instructional, maintenance, and transportation. And that should cover it for through December. This is actually for November, but it covers through December. So, with next month, there will not be a transfer of funds. Second item, we had a blockage of our sewer system at Ben Franklin School. It happened to be on January 7th. And we were having some serious problems trying to get it opened up again. We had to call in two different companies to come in and actually do the repair. And we did get it cleared out before the next day of school, so we were able to have school the next day. However, the amount of money was 8,400 dollars. Edison has a bid limit or a quote law of 6,000. I didn't have time to go out and get quotes, otherwise we never would open school. So, I did it as emergency repair. And I need to have the board declare it as an emergency repair so that my auditors don't write me up next year for not following the quote law. Okay, so we just need the board to declare that as an emergency on Monday night. Next item is the RFP we had for the solar panels on Monroe School. In discussions with the committee and BNG Committee and Dr. Bragan, we decided to reject these bids for just the Monroe School and try to make it a much bigger project. Because the amount of savings from this project was estimated to be about 15,000, but it's a 15-year commitment. We didn't feel 15-year commitment for 15,000 dollars was worth it. We want to go for something much bigger and try to get into the hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, we're going to reject this and we're going to try to find out what other rules we have that can take the solar panels. Of course, they have to be in pretty decent shape, otherwise they're not going to do it for you because they're up there for 20, 15, minimum 15 years, usually more, more like 20. So, we want to do that. So, we want to reject this one for Monday night. The next item is the latchkey snack program. Chartwell's actually provides the snacks for the latchkey program. And it was, has been 80 cents for the last couple of years, but we are going to increase it as of January because they're on a calendar year basis. We're going to raise it up to 90 cents a snack starting January of 2020. Next item is, as I'm sure everybody knows, we are really pushing for the cricket program to take off in Edison. We were very happy to hear that we had a couple of contractors or a couple of organizations that were willing to give us some donations towards it. There's a company called Dream Cricket at a Somerset that wanted to donate 1,300 dollars towards our cricket program. And also a company called Bat and Ball out of North Brunswick that wanted to give us 1,000 dollars for the cricket program, for the J.P. Stevens and Edison High School programs. So, we'd like to have the board accept those donations on Monday night. Next item is, we also have a donation for the Project Unified Club, which is part of Dr. Conklin's program for special education students. There was a fundraiser. They raised, it was called Cool School Challenge. And it raised 23,000 dollars and they want to donate 23, 123 dollars of it to Edison. So, we'd like to accept those funds also on Monday night. Next item, we have some non-public school safety program POs from non-public schools. These are non-public school funds from the state that we don't get any benefit from, but we have to process all the paperwork. So, I need the board to approve those POs so we can have those issued by the New Jersey Education Services Commission of New Jersey, who handles our non-public funds. Next one is for technology. It's non-public technology money for the same type of thing. This is for technology, however, instead of security. Next item is a list of obsolete items. And I do want you to note that you're going to see, there's 12 vehicles on here going back to 2002. These are actually buses, vans that have been used for a while. We'd like to declare them obsolete. We can only use them for 15 years. If they look like they're brand new, once you hit 15 years, you can't use them anymore, no matter what. So, these are obviously all aging out. Well, we're going to try to put them on gov deals to try to sell them. If we can't sell them on the gov deals, we're just going to sell them for scrap value. Because right now, they got over 200,000 miles on them. Some of them are rusting out. They've been sitting around for a long time, so we'd like to get rid of those.
You can't sell it in open market?
Yeah, I can, I can, anyone knows. That's why I'm going to gov deals first.
Okay.
And then I can go to any other, I can put them out to bid if I want, but I don't think they're going to get too much for them because they're really old and they're not in very good shape. But we will try to get as much as we can for them. Next item is the bill list for the month of December in the amount of 20,817,000. And a few of the board members have already called me about some of the bills on there, and I appreciate those. Just let me know if you have any questions on it. And then last item is the transportation report. We have six, five runs that are taking effect January. They're all from the Ed Services Commission, by the way. And they're going to, three are going to the high school, high schools, one's going to a middle school, and one's going to Rutgers Day School. And that concludes my report, Mr. Arico.
Any questions for Mr. Rashad on anything?
Board President?
So, just number three on the bid for solar, this is the second time we reject the solar bid, right?
Yeah, well, the first time we had, the low bidder didn't qualify. He was non-responsive. And the second, and there was only three, and the other two did not save us any significant monies.
Well, this was 15,000 dollars. So, I know, Dr. Bragan, you've done your hazlet on this, you know, solar energy. I hope we're still committed to this, you know, for the long run. Adding them up, it's a lot for 19 schools. I know some of the roof are not in the shape to put the solar panels on it yet. So, I really hope that we are committed to this. And no matter what, you know, they're still saving us some money, one way or another. So, I'm glad we're going for the bigger savings, but I hope we're committed to that. Just for the other one, just a quick comment.
Just on that, you have my word, we are committed to that.
So, we are taking away 12 buses. Are we replacing with any new ones?
Yeah, we have replaced most of them already and we have two new ones coming in this year.
Okay.
And I plan to budget for two additional ones next year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Rashad? Okay, thank you. At this point, we're going to have board member open discussion. I'll start, I guess. I just want to let everyone know, because I've been getting a lot of calls and emails. Now I appreciate the position a little bit more after only a few weeks that Mr. Sheed did for two years. But I do get plenty of emails. I do get plenty of text messages and phone calls and things like that. In reference to the referendum, we, we, a lot of people have said, you know, the public wasn't involved. Well, two years ago, we had a overcrowding committee, and many people came out, politicians, residents, so forth and so on. Maybe not some of the same people that are now actively involved, and that's great that they're now actively involved, and I appreciate that a lot. More people are active, the better. But this was not done in a vacuum. This was not done without public input. This was not done without consideration of public input and board member input, the people that were on the board at the time and currently. So I just wanted to make sure that was very clear. At this time, this is the best plan that we have. Are we still working on something if this does not pass? Absolutely. I know Dr. Bragan's been in contact. I've been in contact. Other board members have been in contact with local officials on various pieces of property. You know, there's a few pieces out there that we're waiting to hear from the township. There's some private property that we're looking into. There's some property that Ms. Prasad Madiker gave me over the weekend. I took a look at that. I think she actually saw it with Frank Healan years ago over on Talmage. But I'm being told it's like half wetlands, half not, but we could look into it. So don't think we're just going to rest all laws on this and stop thinking about what may happen if it doesn't pass. And we have time, as you know, our experts here gave us, you know, the next bond referendum time is September. I know we're all working together and speaking with each other on what we think of this bond referendum, good, bad, or indifferent. I know we all have our own opinions. We need another high school, which is a great idea if we could find a piece of land. We need to make sure we have somehow find space and land for a full-day kindergarten, which we're actively looking at with the council and mayor and people there. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone is aware of what we're trying to do. And we're all coming up with great ideas, and I want to continue that conversation among the board members and with the public and let the public know what we're thinking. So I just wanted to open that up with my comments and then free it up for everyone else. Anyone else have comments?
So I just wanted to just clarify something. I had come to a board meeting when I was not a board member, and I talked about the demographic study, and I talked about how the study was using outdated two thousand and ten decennial census data, and it, you know, didn't make sense. But then, having come on the board, I've had a discussion with a demographer and had a one-hour call with him. And he explained to me he actually did not use the decennial census at all. So what he basically did was he only looked at Edison's birth rate over a period of six years. And he looked at how many of those students actually make it to kindergarten, and that was about sixty-five percent. And obviously, the number changes as the kids go into first grade. Because we have half-day kindergarten, many students do not come here. They go to private kindergarten. So, so I just wanted to make that clarification if anybody else has, you know, felt that. That's not something the person has used. He just kind of used it to describe Edison's population. And it was kind of deceptive, but he did not use it, so that methodology I'm okay with. But I did mention to him, and I did have a conversation about how we should have had another dimension on migration patterns because a lot of students come here from abroad, some come from a different state, different county, maybe a different town. Many come here when the kids, because Edison's such a good school district, some come here only when the kids are school-going age. Having, having said that, I mean, it would have given another dimension to the information we have, but would not have really changed the number. It would have basically, you know, given us an idea about how much is explained by migration, how much is explained by birth rate, and so on and so forth. So it would have given us statistical significance in future. If we ever do it, it would be good to add that in. But so, so the information, the only thing which is kind of different and which changes a lot in this report is the special needs students. And that kind, kind of jumps around a lot. It's not a big number, but then the number, there is a lot of variation in those numbers. So that's something I wanted to bring out. Also, one thought that I've always had is that, I mean, no doubt, we need a full-day kindergarten in Edison. And also, we need, I mean, this whole plan for elementary and middle, I'm totally on board. I just had a suggestion about the high school where, if there is a way, you know, we can have two questions on the referendum. One for middle and elementary, and the other question for high school. Because I feel that because of the high school plan, a lot of people just come and say no to this. So if we can have two questions, then at least we can start the process of addressing overcrowding. Maybe the elementary and the middle school question would pass, and maybe the high school would pass or would not pass. At least it, we, we don't get outright rejected. So, because people could say yes to both, or they could say yes to one and no to the other, but at least we could start the process. And what I'm hearing from people is that even though the high school plan is addressing overcrowding, but it's only addressing the physical overcrowding, it's not addressing the overcrowding and opportunities. So now, if you have a third high school, now you give a chance to one-third of the high school population to become the chairs of various clubs or, you know, to become captains of the sports team. I mean, I'm just saying from the perspective of even within the individual band choir and various things that you have, when you see the number of students just standing on the stage and performing, it's a huge number. So if we add a third high school, which I'm not sure how we can do it, whether we can do it or not, if we could do it, I think it would be great. And if we can have two questions, maybe that might be a way to progress, just my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Conway.
To follow up what Shivie was discussing, that would, where'd she go? A question. If we had broken this bond up into two questions, would that completely change our applications to the state where we'd have to start over from the beginning again? Because we are altering the bond completely at this point?
Yes, please.
No, because it would be the same package but in two questions. But if you wanted to do that, that would have to be done through this resolution on the twenty-seventh because we're bumping up against the deadline. So I would also tell you that if one passed and the other one did not, from a legal strategy perspective, I'm not sure that that would be helpful in an appeal if you appealed the second one.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Board President, a different question.
Yes.
So we just saw the auditor that gave us the, the findings. Who is our auditor for this school year, Dan?
We haven't, we don't, haven't appointed anybody yet.
Okay. Yeah, because we said that, that we're going to have a RFP, and I still haven't seen any on the agenda. So I just want to find out who the auditor is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, now we're going to open it up to public comment. Mr. Healan? Or Dr. Healan, I'm sorry.
Frank Healan, Fifty-Five Harmon Road. How to write these down because six minutes goes fast, so. And some, just a few ideas throwing around, you know, I, I, I'd love to see something like this happen with everything that you need, you know. For me, it's two hundred and sixteen, it's two hundred and sixteen dollars a year. And I, I'm on a teacher pension, so it shouldn't be any problem for me. And and I probably won't have to pay for that long either, so I'm lucky that way. Okay, so I just like, first of all, congratulations to the new board members. Shivie, getting back on the board and curriculum instructions, great to hear. Carol and Shannon, and to President Ralph Erko and Vice President Fowle. And future of the district org as well with the selection of our new superintendent of schools, Dr. Bernard Bragan, an experienced superintendent and Edison administrator. To the new people, I want to introduce myself. I earned a doctorate in educational administration from Columbia University, served as superintendent in New York and New Jersey for twenty-five years, and was a board member for close to seven years with two years as board president. Okay, some, some of these things are going to be obsolete, so I'll just pass over them. Very good explanations by bond counsel that the recent bond referendum for one eighty-nine point five million was accepted by forty-two percent of the voters and rejected by fifty-eight percent. There was a solid turnout of ten point five percent, which is more than the average turnout of voters in a solo election. Generally ranges between eight and the most twelve. The board has decided to try again and has placed the bond referendum voter approval on March tenth with appropriate amendments. In the, if the, okay, this part is, is, if the, if it's rejected two times, the board may go to the commissioner. I think that was very well handled, and it's even more challenging than I ever imagined to try to get, to go that route. And, but I just say that by circumventing the vote of the people, that's how they feel, there, there might even be legal challenges. I wouldn't be one of them, but and it was reported today that the town council with former board member Richard Brecher as chair has set up a committee to investigate property taxes and how to reduce them. So that's, it doesn't portend well. With the funds in health savings and additional state aid over the previous two years minus several expenditures of the board, the district currently has four point five million in capital reserve and four million in free balance. And SSP architect Janet Parentoni stated that with the referendum resolution, the board has the option to go forward with all six schools or depackage the project which Shivie was explaining and go with higher priority schools. Lincoln School was singled out by Ms. Parentoni as supremely overcapacity. Mrs. Parentoni was right on target, and I agree that the Lincoln School should have the highest priority in the district, yes, even higher than J.P. Stevens and Edison High School. My recommendation is waste no more time. Do Lincoln School this summer with four point five million capital reserve plus three or four million of free balance. It uses seven point five million immediately available. With one million free balance, Dan wouldn't like this too much, I know. A mere million, but I'm sure he'll be able to find some other funds. If necessary, do a five-year lease purchase for another five, three million of the required expenditures, or if you had to go with another five million for a lease purchase, you could go up to five million. So in times of increasing enrollments, modular classrooms, here they've grown, while not utopian, have proven to be a practical and economical way of expanding classroom and facility space. The ten additional modular classrooms in Woodrow Wilson Middle School have helped to fulfill the need for expansion. You might consider using modular classrooms as a solution, certainly not ideal for the John Adams Middle School, James Madison. This is in case it doesn't go through, you know. It's very often it doesn't. Did in two thousand and eight, you got less votes. When you put it, it was put up again for less money than you did the first time. It's like putting your house up for more than it's worth, above market value, and then when you put it up, then it goes down. It rolls down the hill. So you might consider, so modular classrooms for John Adams Middle School, James Madison Intermediate School, John Marshall Elementary School. The proposal will give temporary relief to the overcrowding situation in these schools with minimal expenditures. And then next is J.P. Stevens and Edison High Schools have to be focused on, and perhaps a more modest bond referendum with a total of fifty million for both schools might secure a majority of yes voters. It's all a question of trying to find out what that point is that the voters will actually approve it. Dr. Bragan, Mr. Mashod, Board President Erko, and board members, you have some challenging issues to be resolved. Best wishes in finding acceptable solutions to the very real problems of overcrowding of students and teachers in the district's facilities. And just remember, politics is the art of the possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Healan. Ms. Hoshi?
Hi, thank you. Maria Orchid, eighty-three Jefferson. Again, I'd like to say congratulations to everyone that made the board. We look forward to a wonderful year, and welcome for Dr. Bragan. I want to make an announcement for Saturday, this coming Saturday. We're going to have a special needs meeting here with Dr. Bragan. It's going to be Saturday, January twenty-fifth at four thirty. I'd like to put that invitation out if anybody wants to come and discuss issues. Any update on ROTC?
Dr. Bragan?
We're still working on it.
It's definitely being looked into.
The application has been submitted, but there's limited schools that they select for that, so we'll keep you posted.
Yeah, because I know that Woodbridge has one, Biscataway has one, and here we're missing out on competitions. And it would really benefit the students.
It's, it's up to the military. We've submitted the application. At this point, we're going to work for response, and we'll keep you updated.
I'd like to say thank you for the beautiful new website, but some of the parents are having a little difficulty finding the parent portal.
Well, I'm glad you raised that question. While we're transitioning, there's been some snafus. I was actually on the phone with the company that's servicing the website and putting together the new homepages. And I was assured everything would be accurate and up to date on the district website by the end of business on Friday. And we're working really quickly to get that updated. It's a problem, and it's ongoing, and we're working diligently to fix it.
Thank you. With the new vaping law going into effect, how is that going to affect our high schools?
Dr. Bragan?
Sure.
Well, I'm sure we're going to have to, I'm sure we're going to have to adjust policy. I think, I think last year we addressed vaping last year with Ms. Falgroni.
And we're discussing some kind of detection outside the bathrooms. I also understand it's not just high school students.
Oh, sure. It's middle school.
The, the issues have presented themselves already, and the secondary administrative, administrative team, we're looking at our policies and procedures and how they'll, they can address the issue that's really growing with our young population, which is frightening for me, to see how pervasive the use is in the high schools across the, across the nation, really. And to make sure our policies and procedures accurately reflect not only the new laws, but the new technologies involved in these devices. So we're working on that with Mrs. Polikowski and the secondary administrative team. It's already on the radar. We're working on it.
Previously, we did try to do a referendum for, to add a new school. I was wondering, when it failed three times, did it ever go to the state?
No. It fell twice, but
It fell twice, and we never went to the state. Also, I'd like to invite everyone. On February thirteenth, the Clara Barton Neighborhood Block Watch is going to be doing something with the fire department. They had received a grant from the Dennis Leary Foundation, and they're going to be showing all the residents. So everybody's welcome to come over, and they're going to show their new training facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hork. Anyone else? Mr. Deepa Squal.
So I'm going to give a squall to Pine Street. Just two things, actually, three things I want to mention. The one thing is, I just wanted to just let you guys all know, it was a great event for the kids at the Edison High School. My, my sons enjoyed was, it was, which I never knew we had at the high school, was the Peacock Society. And they had a Bollywood movie night. And just to diverse, when I was picking my kids, diverse of kids that were there. I know my kids were there for three hours, had a great time, really enjoyed it. So I just want to thank whoever put that on. Thank you for that. It was, it was really, really good. The other thing is, is the Project Unity Program. My son, younger son, has been going bowling. I think it's like once a week or once every few weeks with them, and that's another program that's been fantastic. He, you know, constantly is just talking about going bowling, how excited he is about that. And it's just, he's telling everybody, and you know, so again, that's a great program that we have. And of course, I do have to speak about the, the bond. And, you know, the thing that I keep on going back to, you know, and, and thank you for your explanation with the state, we, we definitely don't want it to go to the state because that's just going to take, you know, forever to do. But my question is, if it's going to be, say, around two hundred and fifteen dollars a year to do what we currently have a year to do what we currently have, how much more would it be if we, even if we added another seventy-five million to it to build a high school? Okay, now, you know, say it's going to cost us three hundred dollars a year, but now you've added a high school, okay? To me, if you're going to get residents behind something that we don't want to go to the state because it's going to fail, well, will adding a high school to that really make a big difference? To me, I think it would. Again, you know, you're talking two hundred and fifteen dollars to three hundred dollars. Yeah, that's a big difference, but you, you know, you have something more of value by spending that money. And I really think, that's what, this is what I think, that the residents would get more behind a bond that's going to have not just renovations, but it's going to have a brand-new school in that. And I really think, you know, yes, money does matter, obviously, but I think the mark we need to look at is, are, you know, is the bonds failing because of the amount of money? Or is it because what's being offered in that amount of money? What's the value for our money? That's really what I think is the real question. You know, I just think that's what we really need to look at and consider, you know, with, you know, with the bond, if it, if it does, you know, not pass this next time, is we need to look at what, what is the value in this bond for the money? Is it just, you know, adding on to schools we currently have? Is it just that, you know, maybe we do just the certain overcrowded schools right now and add the high school? It's just that, you know, there's so many, you know, so many things. I just want to make sure that we get it right for the kids, as we all do. But again, you know, we want to be able to say to the residents, we have something of value for your money, something that's going to raise the values in your houses because we have this added high school. You know, so I just think that's just something that we really need to consider. Is it really the hundred and eighty-five million dollars? Or is it, what are you getting for that? Which is what we all really think about with our money. What is the value that we're getting for the money? What purchases are we making? Is it really worth that? So, I just want, you know, I understand everybody's working on it, there's a lot of ideas. It's just, you know, something that, that I really think we need to really consider, you know, the value versus how much it really is.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else from the public? Okay. Off to closed session, Dan.
Whereas Section Eight of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter two thirty-one, Public Laws of nineteen seventy-five, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances perusing this now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of the Town of Edison follows. One, the public shall be excluded from discussion of an action upon the hearing specified subject matters. Two, the general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as follows. Attorney-client privilege discussion regarding litigation brought on by former employees, township litigation, Edison Wetlands Association contracts, student matters, ETA grievances, perk and unfair labor practices, personnel matters. Under personnel, we'll be discussing resignations and terminations, retirements, appointments, leave of offices, changes of status, longevity, substitute staff, split fund of personnel, elementary literacy and math academies, salary adjustments for professional staff, adults, adult school for ESL, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, coaching assignments and job descriptions. Three, it is anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matter statement made public at such time as the need for nondisclosure no longer exists, and four, this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Care of a motion, please.
Motion.
Mr. Shi? Mrs. Dr. Chang?
Ms. Matiker?
Yes.
Ms. Budofsky?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Ms. Patel? Ms. Erko?
Yes. Okay, at this time, we are not going to come back into open session and take any action. So, enjoy your evening, and thank you. See you Monday at J.P. Stevens.